Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. So I will call with the April 2nd, 2025 Select Board Meeting to order at 5:30 PM. We do not have any changes to the agenda. Greg is going to do announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everybody. As a reminder that the Select Board Meeting is being audio and video recorded. Couple of announcements that have been on the agenda for the past few weeks. First is Building the Future for the Future, the case for a new Department of Public Works Facility. Explore the current TPW facility and learn about the proposed future facility. Ask questions and share your feedback. The open houses are held on Saturdays, this coming Saturday, April 5th, and Saturday, April 19th, from 8:30 AM until 12:30 PM at 188 Maticet Road. The second is from Planning. It's the Master Plan Two-Part Visioning Program Event. The PUS Department invites all residents to a two-part master plan visioning program that starts this Friday, April 4th, and Saturday, April 5th, to help shape Nantucket's future. You can participate in person on Friday from 5:00 to 7:00, or Saturday from 9:00 to 12:00 at the high school cafeteria at 10 Surfside Road, or you can participate online. And that information is in the packet and also on the town's website. Madam Chair, I have an additional announcement, a quick one. Just a reminder that the Two Fairgrounds parking lot will reopen on April 15th. As you may all be aware, it's been closed since November for a variety of reasons. The, right now, the parking for vehicles has been at Surfside Beach Parking, Beach Parking Lot. That will close effectively on the evening of April 14th. NRTA Ferry Connector Service will resume between downtown and Surfside on, excuse me, Two Fairgrounds on April 15th. There's more to this, and there is an agenda item on the Select Board Agenda next Wednesday for people to come in and participate. That's it, Madam Chair.
And do you want to, sorry, do you want to note that as of the 15th, no more parking at Surfside?
Oh, I could stress, yeah. As of the 15th, actually, it's the evening of the 14th, pretty much, but on the 15th, there's no longer any overnight parking at the Surfside Parking Lot. Everything is being moved back to 2FG. Thanks, Erica.
Okay. Thanks, Greg. Any other Select Board announcements or comments? No? Okay. And I just make note for the record that Dawn is not here today, so it's the four of us. I knew that's what you were getting at over there, Erica. Okay. Update on public comment questions from last week. Mr. Ellis asked two questions. One was regarding the negotiation of additional financial compensation due to the blade collapse. And at this point, any discussions regarding legal strategy associated with the blade turbine failure are done in executive session, so the Select Board wouldn't be commenting publicly on that at this time. And then the other question was regarding the offshore drilling to assess water resources, and we are actively investigating that, and it is going to be an agenda item next week. So we'll have more information then. This is now the time for public comment for items not on the agenda. And I see one hand up online, Rebecca Touham. Time, Erica, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yep, go ahead.
Members of the Select Board, in preparation for the May 3 annual town meeting, it would be helpful if voters had up-to-date information regarding the state of regulating vacation rentals on Nantucket. Voters may disagree on the best way forward, but perhaps we can at least start from a common understanding of where things stand. It is respectfully requested that the following information be shared publicly by April 23rd, 2025, so that we may review these facts prior to the meeting and all understand them. Number one, what is the town's plan to implement the will of the voters as expressed in approval of Article 60 at the 2024 Annual Town Meeting and Article 5 at the 2024 Special Town Meeting? Specifically, how will the short-term rental registration process be amended to deny permits to investor-owned corporate entities? Item two, the number of properties the town identified as possible short-term rentals and initiated, please register your short-term rental letters to property owners or managers starting from program launch in March 2024 present. Number three, the number of short-term rental permits issued by the Health Department. Number four, any other facts that have been gleaned from the short-term rental permit application process that the town has previously released to any individuals or organization based on Freedom of Information Act requests or other discussions. I have tried to keep this list short because I don't want to further burden the Health Department. I know they already have a lot on their plate, but these seem to be key facts that are in some dispute, and it would be good for us all to have, to be on the same page going to the meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Rebecca. Anyone else in the room want to?
George Ellis. My first question is how the proposed new Our Island Home will affect room and board rates for patients or our Nantucket seniors. The room and board rate, which does not include doctor visits or medications, at Our Island Home last summer was $580 per day, or $17,000 a month, or $212,000 a year. Unfortunately, Medicare, the insurance that most seniors have, does not cover room and board for nursing care in a facility, or even hospice care at a nursing home. These rates are higher than the average, our rates here at Our Island Home are currently higher than the average for Massachusetts, which are higher than national averages. Medicaid, for those who do qualify, now does cover room and board for nursing home care. So what are the projections for room and board rates at the proposed new Our Island How will they compare to our current rates? What are the projections for the town's annual financial support for the new home operating budget deficits compared to the current home? Thank you.
Thank you. Cliff?
Cliff Williams. I know I asked last week about the method, I don't know if you got around to that, the method we use in order to purchase affordable housing, property or houses. I think that was my question last week. I'd just like to add, for someone that wants to engage in affordable housing, what's the appropriate contact? I guess that's something I think that lacks on who you would contact and how to get an answer back, because it seems like I call different organizations and a lot of the times I don't even get an answer. So I would think if the town's that engaged in affordable housing, maybe we should have a appropriate method where people would respond. Thanks.
Mary Chalk.
Hi, Mary.
I'd like to talk about the drilling project off our South Shore, 12 miles off our beach, that is supposed to commence May 1st, where they're going to be drilling 1,000 feet into the seabed to look for fresh water and rare earth minerals, according to the reports. So I wanted to learn more about this, because I was really reading it in the media, that over the last couple of weeks was really disturbing. So I did find that they are engaged in the NEPA process, the National Environmental Policy Act, and it's required that they, number one, involve the public in participate, to participate in this NEPA process, which means scoping meetings and allowing participation through public comment. As far as I can see, that was never done. So I did find an environmental assessment report that was released March 11th, a draft. And, you know, there's a list of topics that they are required to review, you know, our marine life, our cultural, impacts to cultural, you know, our cultural and tourism. And under the tourism portion, they did describe tourism on the, in the Nantucket Sound and recreational activities in the Nantucket Sound, and recreational activities in the Nantucket Sound. Never once did they mention South Shore tourism, South Shore recreational activities, going to the beach, our reliance on the clean beaches and water quality. So that was totally omitting, omitted, and that is shocking. So another concern I have is, is they're describing the drilling process, and they're using bentonite clay, starch, drilling fluids. And in their report, they said during the drilling that indefinite mud recycling is not feasible for this project. An approximately 43 cubic meters of drill cuttings and solids from each borehole will be released every week. And they expect solids to sink to the floor, the seabed, but that the fine mud will be released and dispersed through currents. This is 12 miles away for 30 days of drilling. My question is, will this reach the beaches? Will our beaches be closed to this?
Mary, that's your three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara?
Good evening again. My name is Barbara Bergo. I'm from Brewster, and I'm generally here on the Article 36 Committee issue with the African Meeting House and the Working Group. And so we've provided concerns a while back about the portion of the folks that were asked to apply regarding any conflict of interest, but I never heard any feedback. So hence, the person, or the issues that we were concerned with, the person was voted on unanimously. So either all the board members didn't see or concur with the validity of any of the concerns on conflict of interest, is what we were asked for, or, as you said, you would appreciate me giving you feedback, so maybe you just didn't want my feedback, but I tried. So do I feel my voice is being silenced? Yes, a bit. And I'm certainly, I'm not alone. I'm certain that I'm not alone, because many of your constituents have been saying to me and us, what is going on with this process? So I did expect to come today, hoping that there would be a meeting tomorrow of the Working Group for the Investigation, to find the investigator, but I heard, oh, last night, and I'd already booked my fair, that it wasn't happening tomorrow, the first meeting. So I'm here to ask, and say to your residents, most people have trusted in me all this time that I've been coming here for almost a year, but this time, I'm afraid I let people down, or maybe we did, because you had a wonderful agenda and timeline on picking the Working Group. But then I don't see anything, or I haven't shared anything, about when the Working Group is going to start. We said that people would have no conflict of interest, not only in other issues, but that should have meant timing as well. And I hear that tomorrow's meeting has been rescheduled, and maybe a meeting can be happening April 17th. As we know, next month will be one year since your town voted for this process to happen, and after one year, people are telling me they're very disappointed that we haven't even got to step one yet. I had the occasion to read a letter submitted to the NAACP, saying that there were, back then, about 10,000 of your residents. A majority of your voters voted for this to continue happening. And it said that Nantucket, as an off-season population in the area of 10,000 inhabitants, I read now that you're more like 13,000, it's a summer attraction with worldwide reputation. Nantucket community, both minority and white population, are to this day outraged by the foregoing incident and are frustrated that the culprits have not been identified and brought to justice for this hate crime. Something has to be done. And that letter was actually dated April 15th, 2019, by Kevin M. Heeding. Two of the people are already dead.
Thank you, Barbara. That's, thank you. Campbell?
Good evening, everyone. So I sort of have a statement and a question at the same time. So in reviewing some of the short-term, well, I like to call them short-stay rentals, but nonetheless, you know, there seems to be this tension between the primary use and the accessory use of property, right? And it just seems to me like zoning is made so that communities can determine what happens where and, you know, in what areas, kind of a thing. And it just seems like the tension between these two polar opposites, either it's a primary use or it's an accessory use, seems like we should be able to, like, blend something together, right? So when I think about what's considered investment properties, I think of that as a commercial use in a residential zone, and I automatically think, well, that's not okay, because it's a commercial use. Now, we do have zones for commercial use. We have commercial neighborhoods, we have commercial downtown, commercial mid-island, and some others. Sea Tech, I think, gets included in that as well. And so, like, for me, I would have no problem with a short-stay rental occurring in those commercial areas, because it's a commercial zone, right? And, and that could be a primary use. But you could also have an accessory use in residential areas, especially in the downtown areas and the smaller lots, thinking anything from, you know, R1 to R20 or R40. I mean, that can sort of be worked out. But I just think you could have an accessory use as well that would address the type of tensions that people have about short-term rentals within their neighborhood, right? And so I don't know whether through friendly amendments we can make that happen, but one of my questions was, as I was thinking about this, was, well, has someone thought about investigating this? And if so, why aren't we going to do it? And then, if no one's looked at it, is there a problem with that? I know that sometimes it's like, whoa, gee, that makes zoning difficult. Well, zoning is difficult. There's a lot of people that don't understand zoning. When I started, I didn't understand zoning, but, you know, I have a much clearer position on it now, and I think that that might be a way to, to bring us together as a community instead of having us so divided. Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Campbell. Okay. Anyone else?
Brooke Gibbs. Please deal with this African Meeting House conflict. Please give them what they're asking for. They are, you know, they have a conflict of interest with one of the people that you have on the board, then reassign it. You know, you have other people that'll do it, and you know you have people that are neutral. Okay? She's clear about what she's asking for, and you clearly haven't given it to her, and it's been a long time. It's been a year. Right? You there?
I'm looking at you.
Okay, yeah, I know, but it's like, you're not moving. So what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to explain to you is, is like, this is important, and you're like zoning out and looking off into the space. You're not paying attention. You're not. Your health is in space, you're not. Pay attention to what I'm saying to you. Give them what they're asking for. Stop screwing them around, stop screwing everybody around, okay? Do it. It's very simple. I can do this for two more minutes if I have to. Please. If I have your attention, please do it. You have other people that can take care of it, let them take care of it. Let's get this fixed. Seven years of driving down there, seeing that is embarrassing. Okay? Are you not embarrassed by it? Seven years, nobody can take care of it? I'll take care of it. You guys won't listen to me. People offer you all sorts of things, and all you want to do is go, yeah, okay, someday. Maybe tomorrow, maybe after May 20th. Take care of it.
Hi, I just wanted to say that this is about short-term rentals. I was at Campbell's event last night at the library, and it's very educational and informative, but I had a question about clear definitions on residency and resident, like year-round residents. I think there's some confusion in some of the articles with the terminology, if it could be maybe better explained by some as to, like, one of the articles is, is if you live in the house for 30 days, you could rent for 29 days, and there were some questions about people in the community being confused about the residency versus a true island resident, and how that works with some of these articles. So just a helpful hint going into town meeting, where we're already really confused on that topic anyway, that would be great. Thank you. I'm sorry, Amy Eldridge.
Thank you. I missed it, Amy. Anyone else? Okay, no hands up online. We'll move on from public comment. There's no new business tonight. Next up is approval of minutes, payroll warrants, and treasury warrants. Do I have a motion?
I'm moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. We have a gift acceptance, which I'm gonna, Tom, you don't happen to have it up, do you?
Give me a moment. Yes.
Okay.
We have a gift, a gift acceptance from Human Services for a gift of $50 from Robert and Mary Miklos, Miklos, for the Salt Marsh Senior Center. Make a motion to accept all gifts for their designated purposes and send thanks to the donors.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll give that to Malcolm.
You'd be, you know.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And thank you to the Miklos family. Okay. Next up is Citizen Departmental Committee requests, a request for approval of a street name for a new roadway. And Tracy, are you going to introduce this?
I am.
Oh, Erica's going to introduce this. Thank you.
So every now and then, you get a request to name a roadway. Normally, when a new subdivision happens and a road is created, that roadway is named through the planning board process, but every now and then, they aren't ready to put a name out there, so it gets approved without one. This is that case. This is a piece of land that runs between Old South Road and Tacoma Way and gets access of a Young's Way, runs parallel to it. And it's, they're being, they're asking to name it Jones Way. I have checked with the Assessors Office, with the Police Department, to make sure that their E911 program doesn't have any conflicts with this. Originally, they wanted Jones Road, but that was too close to Paul Jones Road. But everyone is agreed to Jones Way, so I would ask that you approve the request.
Okay.
I'm of approval.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. It's interesting to hear the process, Erica.
And I thought of John, the other road. I thought, well, wait a minute, we can't do that. And then the way, that makes sense.
Yeah. Okay. Next up is real estate item. Tracy, you're on for this.
I am.
Okay.
So I'm here with the purchase and sale agreement for the town to purchase Nine Goldfinch Drive for municipal employee housing. This property is a three-bedroom, three-bath home in the Naushop subdivision off Old South Road. As you're aware, then, Nantucket continues to face significant workforce challenges, and securing stable, long-term housing options at a variety of levels is critical to maintaining essential services. The town has leased housing off and on and on a short-term basis, and while this provides immediate access, it is not a cost-effective, sustainable, long-term solution. Purchasing adds a valuable asset to the town's portfolio, providing housing opportunities for municipal employees decades to come. Nine Goldfinch meets the criteria as a move-in-ready property in a desirable, family-friendly neighborhood where municipal employees can integrate easily into the community. In addition, this purchase is a strategic investment in its work, in the town's workforce. Providing stable housing strengthens our ability to deliver services, improve recruitment and retention, and planning succession. And I'm asking for the board to approve and execute the purchase and sale agreement for Nine Goldfinch Drive.
Okay. Thank you, Tracy. Any questions from the board or a motion?
I'm of approval.
A second for discussion?
Okay.
Yeah, I would just comment on that this came to the trust originally, and it's not possible for the trust to purchase this property for the usage that, that the town has in mind. So this was the, this was the alternative way to do it, and this is just part, simply part of how the total real estate picture and finding and recruiting and retaining department heads, town employees, et cetera. So this, this may not be the perfect way of doing this, but it is, it is unfortunately we're in the position of that it's necessary. So I, yeah.
I had a couple, I had two different people reach out today. One was, why are you doing this way, et cetera? And I explained it, sort of what you just said. The other person was a town employee who 20 years ago, 25 years ago, was adamantly opposed to any discussion of town employee housing. And I brought that up, and we brought that up during the comprehensive plan back then, because some of us saw that private businesses were already having to do it, and we saw the direction the town was going. The town should get ahead and would have to do it. And this was someone that, you know, was adamly against that and used to argue constantly with me about it. He and I spoke today, and he completely understands and is in full support. You know, he's not in full support maybe of how much we're spending and where it's going to be, or what some of the details, but he completely understands now that the town cannot operate if it does not have housing for its employees. And so, you know, the pendulum has finally, has sort of swung. Now the question, I think where we're, you know, not for discussion tonight, but the details are, how are we going to manage it? How are we going to maintain them? How are we, you know, the operational, how are we going to make sure it's fair? There's, there's things that we need to tighten as we move, and we all know that, but I think the, I hope that the community understands that, you know, we will not have, you know, town employees, we will not have services. We will not be able to supply the services, you know, unless we do this. So.
Okay. So I have, anybody else want to say anything? Are you guys ready for vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that is unanimous. Okay. Next up, Town Manager's Report is the Sewer Department, including the Stormwater Division. I think David Gray's gonna join us online for the presentation, and Charles Douglas is here, the Stormwater Manager.
Charles Johnson.
I'm sorry, Charles Johnson.
Good evening, everyone.
Oops. Go ahead.
The, thank you for having me tonight. This is the, our update for the Sewer Department and the Stormwater Division as well. The mission of the department has not changed anything significantly over the years. It's still to protect public health and environment for my community by, by providing high-quality wastewater collection and treatment services in an effective, efficient, and responsive manner.
David?
I go.
Yes? David, hang on one second. Your slideshow is.
You're going really fast.
On autopilot.
I don't know why it's doing that. I'm sorry.
Oh.
It wants you to speak a whole lot faster, but we're not going to make you do that.
I'll be manually.
Okay. All right. So we're on the missions. Okay, all right, so we're on the missions, go ahead.
Yeah, the mission is, you want me to start over again there?
No, we got it.
No, I think, I think everybody can see it now, so.
Okay. The goals for fiscal '26 and beyond, we're in the process of trying to develop a Sewer Department strategic plan so we can better integrate the different divisions that we have from operations, collections, construction, and then the stormwater management, which is gonna be a big one going forward. It's new to us, so to speak. We're in the early stages of that. We're also in the early stages of generating some stormwater regulations, which Charles will hit on here shortly. We still pride ourselves in being able to work very closely with other town departments and island organizations during all phases of our projects and coordination with other projects. That has been extremely instrumental over the past few years with working with Drew at the DPW and Mark at the Water Company so that when we go down a road, we're replacing 100-year-old infrastructure for anything that's in the road, putting in all-new and then getting into the restoration afterwards. In the past year or so, we had the creation of a Stormwater Enterprise Fund. Then we did hire Charles Johnson. He came over from the sewer. He was our engineering for the sewer department and he went over to, it's a stormwater manager. And like I said, we continue to work on the development of stormwater regulations that will meet today's standards as well as meeting the future standards, which is something that we're finding challenging in some spots. But we're working very closely with everybody on these. And one of the other things that we're, we're continuing to do is we're looking and examining and evaluate different technologies that are available for destruction and reduction of PFAS and the waste stream and the treatment facilities, which over the past three years alone, the technology has just changed so dramatically that it's, it makes your head spin under different stuff that's out there. I'm currently down south and I'm hoping to see a facility here before the end of the week over in Tennessee to see a newer type technology that's out there. So PFAS is really still at the lead and head of everything that we're doing. This is the org chart. I don't know if we need to go through it much at all. But we're, we're slowly starting to fill a bunch of empty spots that we had. We have had a recent surge in applications, which has been great. We did have someone else leave the department. But it's, it's getting better than it has been. At a glance, just to kind of go over what, what we are, what we do. The Sewer Department is a skilled and certified department responsible for the operation and maintenance of two treatment facilities on the island. Surfside is a mass grade six rated facility. The highest you can go in the state is a seven, which with recent upgrades and technology advancements that we've had, we may end up becoming a grade seven. Sconset is a grade four facility. Totally different process than what we do at Surfside. That is our best facility for training. We try to stick, put a lot of the guys out there with, with our senior operator out there, Margaret, and learn that facility because it's more of a hands-on than Surfside. We handle over 17 pump stations of all different sizes, complexities, control operating systems, skater systems. So we're trying to bring a lot of that into compliance with using the same types of equipment and controls. We do have over 80 miles of sanitary sewer collection systems, either force mains or gravity systems, as well as 12 and a half miles of the very larger municipal sewer force mains that run from the bigger pump stations that we have across the island. Some of our other responsibilities are sanitary sewer permitting and inspection services and sewer project oversight and planning. Again, in 2024, we assume the responsibilities of stormwater management, which I'll, that Charles touch on again. I don't know if you want me to go through any of the budget stuff specifically. I can, or I can just touch on the EIRs.
Yeah, I think, I think go to the EIRs for the public. It is in the packet if you want to look into more detail into the budget.
Okay, thank you. We do have one request for a new personnel position, a data entry position with the multiple technologies that we're starting to get into with GIS, CMMS, GPS, and some of the project management software programs that we're starting to look at. A position is gonna end up being full-time just to work on that aspect of all the data collection, data entry, et cetera. Some of the increases that I was seeking with operational expenses, repair and maintenance of vehicles, $10,000 probably isn't enough, but it's a starting point. We are seeing dramatic increases in trying to repair vehicles with parts. And of course nowadays, every time you call someone for something, they, they want to blame everything on the tariffs for delays, et cetera. So we're seeing that. Equipment maintenance and repairs. Again, some of the extremely long lead times that we're still experiencing since the COVID days, we're talking 18 weeks or better on some time, on some time pump equipment. So we're having to rebuild or maintain some of our, our pumps before we can get new pumps in, which has really been a challenge. Our expendable supplies, you know, $15,000, which is another ongoing. And our chemical costs have really jumped up quite a bit in fuel surcharges, et cetera, stuff like that. Electricity is another ongoing one. One thing I will just comment on the electricity. With the solar system that was installed out there with help from Lauren, we're saving approximately 32,000 kilowatt hours a month right now as they're operating at full, at full strength. 32,000 is probably a small piece of the total electricity that we use, but any little bit helps us. It's been, I, I gotta say, working with the company that we ended up having to put the system together, they are extremely responsive. If, I've called them multiple times and if I see a panel that might be a little discolored or just looks odd, I call the, the local rep and within hours or the next morning, they're on-site inspecting the panels. So I, I gotta say, it's, it's, it's been a really good addition to the plan and we're looking to follow in the future possibly for more solar systems on the buildings out there. Some of our capital stuff that we're, we're looking to do, the airport road pump station upgrade, that originally was built in 1984. So we're with, with final costs and, and everything else and having to supply our own new transformer, et cetera. So that's about a $1.7 million supplemental funding request. Somerset Needs Area Sewer Design is currently underway. We're working very closely with all departments as well as Kevin Manuel, the project coordinator. Tracy and I have been on the phone, I can't tell you how many times about the project from our borings to potential property acquisitions, et cetera. It's about 3.4 million. Cato Lane Pump Station upgrades, that station was rebuilt in 2004 when the Sconset plant was updated. And now we have to bring that up to today's standards. 1.89 in upgrades and tanks and controllers and new electricity, et cetera. And the Sconset Clarifier improvements, that facility was constructed in 2003, 2004. And the clarifiers have finally decided to tell us it's time. So we're looking to replace and, and repair the clarifiers out there. That's the initial step of the wastewater treatment process and getting rid of all the floatables and settleables. Moving forward here, this is more on some of the stormwater stuff that I can have Charles jump in on. He's been extremely, extremely helpful and a key player in all this stuff for the stormwater. So if, if Charles is still there, if he could take on this piece.
Do you want to step up to the mic? He wants you to, you just got tapped.
Yeah, I, I wanted to piggyback on David's, Charles Johnson, Stormwater Manager for the Sewer Department. I wanted to piggyback on Dave's presentation on the Sewer Department, especially since we're looking at these stormwater regulations that we're going to be bringing to you very quickly. And those regulations are going to establish a stormwater utility. And that will look at the, at its, first of all, we're looking at the condition of the existing infrastructure and looking at the impacts of the stormwater to, to the water quality, especially in Nantucket Harbor. And we're, part of those regulations are going to establish a Stormwater Enterprise Fund. And that's going to be based on the amount of impervious surfaces on each property that, over the entire island. It's something that a lot of towns in Massachusetts and across the country is, they've been establishing these stormwater utilities. And here, we're probably going to have a couple different zones, like a downtown zone where there's more of a established infrastructure and fees to support that infrastructure that's used by the downtown properties. And then a different zone with reduced funding for people outside of downtown that don't require as much services from the, from the town. We're about 90% complete with those regulations and we're, we're ready to present those to town administration and the select board in May. I think we'll wait after town meeting. There's not that much of a hurry, but we'd like to get that in front of you as soon as possible. And they're, they're in pretty good shape right now.
Can I ask a question about those? Just, yeah, real quick. Will they be sort of by watershed, by if you're in an area downtown that's flowing to the harbor, you're included, but if you're in an area and you're flowing to wetlands, you're not? Or how are you gonna break it?
Well, the thought is that everybody island-wide will contribute to the, the funding. But like I said, there'll be different zones. So the more intense downtown areas where to support the, the more urban infrastructure, that would be one, one rate. And then there'd be a reduced rate if you're, if you have a lot outside of town, you know, where the, you know, maybe on a dirt road or something that doesn't need the support of, of the town. But everybody uses the downtown area and the stormwater infrastructure and we feel that they should contribute something. Now, these fees are going to be very reasonable. We're, we're looking at fees that probably will be annually under $100 a property. So it's not something that's, you know, outrageous in, in terms of the price of, of supporting this fund. But there'd be, you know, more, it increased in the downtown area. But it, we're looking at being, you know, in the middle of, of the fees that are now being asked by different towns in, in the state.
Yeah, just, I, I've been through this a few times with trying to figure out sewer and how to allocate sewer costs. And the more public input and public, there's gonna be some people who are gonna say the fees are just a chance for the camel to get its nose under the tent. And there's gonna be a lot of, you know, sort of pushback that the more public, you know, discussions and input you can gather, or we can gather, the better chance we have of, you know.
Oh, yeah. No, so our presentation's just to town administration and select board and then we'll go to meetings. We have, he's an insessor, our consultants that, that worked on the sewer regulation. So they've been through the process already. And like I said, it's, it's, I don't think anyone is going to find that the, this fee schedule is that, you know, outrageous. And, and there's, most towns are going that way instead of just taking it out of the general fund and, you know, and it's a good way of having the utility support all planning and, you know, the maintenance of the system.
No, I'm, I'm, and I'm in favor of that, I just think, I just want to make sure. The other thing, just a, just in general, I was reading a coastal resiliency plan out of Charleston. And one thing that was really interesting to me is they said they started their, sort of their, they started at high ground, they started their water, they started their sort of coastal resiliency at high ground, diverting water from the higher areas. So they, it was more cost-effective to do that, capture it at high, like say on Academy Hill rather than, or Main Street. Having it all run down Main Street, they worked up high first and had catch basins underneath the roads and diverted it into like Lily Pond and wherever.
Right.
And then it was less expensive down next to the water because they didn't need to pump as much. So I'm sure you and I have thought, you've been in the coastal resiliency meetings and I'm sure you guys are looking at that, but it's, it's interesting.
Yeah, it's very interesting. There, there will be some kind of an adjustment to the, to the fee if property owners include some of that green infrastructure and kind of detain storm events on their property, up to 50% of the, the fee. And other towns have been doing that too. And it makes sense in the long run, like you say. And we plan on including more green infrastructure into the system and similar to what Land Bank is doing at Lily Pond.
You don't think of, sorry, one more thing. You don't think about it, but I did, I had a cellar that flooded and it's really expensive to run a pump, you know? So you don't think about that, but running pumps and the electricity costs we have here, it is expensive. So if you, the more we can do diverting stuff from high ground and, you know, and making swales and moving into existing wetlands, the cheaper it is for all of us. So it was, I'm glad to hear you guys are heading that way.
Yeah, I've, I've got some other things later on too to explain about the green.
I won't interrupt you anymore, ruin your, your presentation.
No, no, it's fine, no. But the one thing that we did find during that C-MOM program investigating the, the, the shape of the infrastructure is that the stormwater system is pretty rough shape. So you'll, you'll be seeing some emergency repairs around town, specifically in front of the town pier building. There have been some sinkholes, you know, the last 10 years and DPW just keeps putting cold patch on. But we had our contractor go in and camera those pipes and they're, they installed corrugated metal pipes, you know, in the saltwater environment. I, you know, I can't imagine doing that, but that's all collapsing. So we'll have to do some repairs there. A lot of repairs in the Brant Point area, same thing. We've had sinkholes, pipes collapsing. So we're gonna address those things right away and then phase some other, you know, some repairs over the next few years. We're starting a stormwater sampling program. And this was, this came out of some work that, and again, David brought up the collaboration with different groups in town, different departments in, in the town. So we collaborated with Nantucket Land and Water Council and we applied for a grant to, from Great Harbor Yacht Club. And, um, we applied for a grant to, from, uh, Great Harbor Yacht Club. They provided us with, um, some, uh, some composite samplers and flow meters and those will be installed in five, uh, of the outfalls that are getting, or discharging stormwater into the harbor. And that gives us the ability to, to collect a baseline database for, uh, the nutrient loading that's going into the harbor from the stormwater. Nobody has even addressed this in the past. Um, we have no idea what the, the town's stormwater is contributing to the water quality issues in Nantucket Harbor. And also, um, the bacteria loading that's going in from stormwater. So, um, we've got these samplers. We're, we're going to be doing those five outfalls, uh, ten storm events per year over the next couple of years. And then that'll just give us a baseline of what we're putting into the harbor. We'll be sampling for nutrients, metals, oil and grease, other pollutants and bacteria. We've also, um, started, uh, well, we've, we've got some new equipment for testing in our lab. So we, we'll have in-house testing for bacteria, total coliform, E. coli and, um, enterococci bacteria. And that'll be important to work with the health department and, and trying to trace back where the bacteria is coming from, you know, resulting in beach closures and impacts of the shellfish in the harbor. Interesting, at a conference that we, we went to, um, in January, the, uh, they're able to trace back bacteria, um, with DNA testing. So if we get a hit on the bacteria, we can, um, test it again. And they can trace the, the DNA back and say whether it's coming from, uh, Canada goose, whether it's coming from a dog or coming from human, human beings. So then we can really isolate, you know, and, and trace back where the, the, where the bacteria is coming from and maybe eliminate some of the sources. So, uh, we'll be working with the health department, um, on that. I hate to go on too much with this, but, uh, we're concluding a feasibility study looking at the green infrastructure that Matt was talking about. Expanding it from, from like what we're doing with Lily Pond and, um, part of that is the restoration of the constructed wetland down at Washington Street Extension. That was, I don't know who proposed that or, or constructed it, but it was way ahead of its time. And it's, um, it was built in the two, early two thousands. And it, the, uh, it, it was built to treat the stormwater before it enters into, um, to the harbor. So it takes the nutrients and uses, uses plants to use those nutrients, um, before it, it gets discharged. Unfortunately, whoever designed it did not have a maintenance plan, um, presented with it. And it was kind of neglected and it's overrun with fragmities. And so, uh, the, one of the projects we want to do this spring is restore that back to, to working condition and use that as a model for, for other, uh, some other discharges in the town.
Can I comment on that? I was around when that originally happened on my first go-round here.
Do you know who brought that to the town? Because I know the Soil Conservation Service designed it and it's a really interesting design. And, um, you know, I, I, I just want to get it back into operation.
Yeah, we, just, we, I'm, I can't remember if they handed off the, you know, a report on how to do it, but we knew at the time that there would be maintenance. We, you know, we were told that every so many years you had to dig out, you had to go down and dig out a certain layer and get rid of it. And then it would, it would work again.
Right.
And so that was one of the concerns we had because we have catch basins that are under, you know, sort of CONCOM, uh, you know, CONCOM regulations, CONCOM, uh, rules that they've put in place, you know, sort of down on the wharf that are supposed to have pads changed and don't get those things changed. And so a lot of times, you know, we require putting in these fancy things, but if you don't maintain them, you know, think about a parking lot. You bring all the water to one spot and then you have a fancy thing you're supposed to maintain. If you don't maintain it, all you've done is dig a hole and bring all those pollutants in a concentrated manner close into the groundwater. So you really have to take care of these things. And I'm glad that you guys are starting to do that because it's sort of been one of the problems.
And the part, some of those maintenance plans are going to be incorporated into the enterprise fund. And now we'll have a, you know, with that, um, CMMS program, we can track all the maintenance on every, all the structures that, that are installed. And, and like you say, the maintenance is key on, on these things. You know, they're designed to have, have a, a ponding area that's, that, um, that sand and sediment settles and then you have to excavate it out. And some of these things, uh, they, they require maintenance after every storm event, you know, and not much, but you have to keep track of it.
And it's not just, it's not just our maintenance for the town. We have to make sure that if there are private homeowners that, or private businesses that have put these things in, that their maintenance happens too. Because it's all going to the same place. And so hopefully, you know, if you guys identify those, they can be part of your, you know, sort of part of the spreadsheet and those, they can be tweaked to make sure they're doing that, you know?
Right. And that's part of the regulations that the, it, any new development, they're, they're gonna be required to have a maintenance plan that, and they have to report annually or every five years to the, um, to the, the stormwater, uh, enterprise.
And I would, I would, I would argue that they have to report, you know, if they're supposed to do it twice a year or after every storm, I would argue they should do it then. And that we, because it's hard. We don't do a very good job of, uh, sort of ma- you know, not maintenance, but oversight, you know, sort of we, a lot, like, we don't wanna, you know, we don't want people mad at us in, in a way. And, and it's hard work to do that. But I think if we can make it automatic and put it on a, you know, put it on a regular ticker and, you know, I, you know, otherwise it'll go five or 10 years and we'll be back where we are again now, you know?
That's what's really interesting about that CMMS program where, you know, so each structure, each catch basin has a maintenance requirement. Some of them fill up more quickly than others and you can tag those. So, you know, this one may, may have to be addressed every five years. The, the next one over maybe once every year. So, um.
So Charles, this will all be addressed in the proposed stormwater regulations, I presume, right?
Yeah.
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 So now we know it's coming.
It's coming. And, um, other things are coming too. David kind of, uh, went over it a little bit, but the Title V regulations, um, that, uh, have been pushed on, um, the Cape Cod municipalities, they're coming. And that, that has implications on both, um, the health department, the sewer department, um, and will probably require some, um, and we can get into, to this too, but I'm just giving you the heads up that that's coming. The, um, DEP says it within three years, we, we need to, um, be looking at that. So it, there are ways to get around the requirement that every property owner has to upgrade to an IA system. But it would, it mean that the town has to take responsibility through a watershed permit to do that.
So I'm gonna ask that we not get too into the details tonight because that's all coming later. Is there more to your presentation from the?
One minute.
Great.
Yeah, like, uh, how are we gonna get all this stuff done? David said we had, we're transitioning to sewer operators to the stormwater, uh, division. We've got the, uh, emergency repairs that, um, that contract is out to bid. And I've, um, also got two, uh, Northeastern engineering students, um, through a co-op program that are starting in July. And they'll be here till December. And the housing department has got them housing. So. And they've both accepted. So, um, no, that's great news. And they're gonna be a big help.
Great.
So thanks for your time. I know I went too long.
No, it's, I'm fascinated by stormwater personally. So, Tom?
Thank you. Thank you, David and Charles. That was a really interesting presentation. Lots of stuff going on. I just did a quick search on stormwater enterprise funds and it looks like several dozen towns throughout the Commonwealth have opted into something similar. So, um, yeah, I, I'm sure that will be coming soon. Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. So I just want to make sure we got through all of David's report.
I got a couple more.
Okay. Yeah.
Madam Chair, I can just touch on quickly. Um, the, the Long Sea Street Third and Fourth Main Project is all the major construction, which means all the mainline work has been completed. Except for some work at the treatment facility, which they're working on currently. So we can bypass a lot of the nineteen thirty-nine infrastructure on the plant and put it all new. Most areas of the downtown enforcement corridor, you've noticed a lot of the restoration work has come on, the curbing sidewalks. We had started on Atlantic Ave recently and at Five Corners. And, uh, we had to make some changes at the corner of Prospect Street and Atlantic because of some truck traffic concerns, which we've come up with a new plan of how we're gonna design the, the corner there. So trucks will be able to make the swing a, a bit easier and not destroy any of the, uh, installed brickwork. That's coming up pretty quickly. Um, just some of, uh, challenges and opportunities. I said PFAS regulations we know are coming at some point. Uh, again, Title V, uh, erosion along the South Shore and Skonset, we're constantly watching. We do understand with everything going on nowadays that there is a potential for decrease in some of our SRF funding. Another available grants, um, more to follow on that as we find out about it. One thing that we just did recently, which was, uh, the first time on Nantucket is we had New England Tractor Trailer School come down and, uh, conduct a CDL training class in-house for, between the airport, DPW, sewer, stormwater. A lot of candidates have already taken their exams, passed their, their driving tests. A few are still kind of slowly filling in. Um, that's a first for Nantucket because of the new federal regulations. So kudos to all those that passed. Um, it was a very intense week-long training class and then driving right afterwards. So, um, that was a, that was a first. Um, and then in summary, just wanted to let everyone know that we're still seeing a steady flow in sewer permitting, you know, between twenty, twenty-five permits a week. Last year, in the same period, we did seventy-three so far. And this year we've done a hundred and ten. So there's still a lot of stuff going on out there that, uh, you may not see or you do see, but that pretty much touches on everything. I know Charles and I, when we start talking, we, we tend to keep going, but thank you, everyone.
Thanks, David, very much. Any other questions from the board? Appreciate it. We know you got a lot on your plate over there. So, thank you. Um, okay. Uh, any committee reports?
Yes, Madam Chair. Uh, just to announce that the African Meeting House Committee will meet on the seventeenth. I'm sorry it hadn't been earlier, but to get everyone's schedule organized, uh, was a challenge.
Thanks, Malcolm. Anybody else?
Yeah, I have just one comment. I know last week, uh, oh, Matt Peel talked about traffic. It seems the Old South Road, especially in the morning, I had, uh, today, two people, the day before, a couple of people reaching out and they just can't believe here we are in March and April and it's backed up from here all the way out. And a lot of people, after the meeting last week, I said to him, I said, because he was like, oh, we need a traffic circle and everything will be fine. And, you know, we have to study that because I think it might just be backing up, you know, we'll move quicker and back up somewhere else, you know, again. So I think, you know, sort of what I explained to him, my theory on it is that we need an urban grid pattern from Liberty Street all the way out to the airport. And we need to, you know, sort of have more ways in and out. Like we have to connect a lot of neighborhoods that are not, you know, that have cul-de-sacs and are not lacking connections so that everything doesn't have to go in and out. Old South Road is the only way. Uh, I know Andrew Vorse and I didn't always agree, but that's one thing we agreed on that he, and he brought it to some of the neighbors and was, you know, roundly shouted out. Uh, I wrote, keep writing to the neighbors and saying, we have to do this. We have to do an urban pattern. If we're gonna keep adding two hundred cars a year, we have to do an urban pattern so that we have, cars can still move. It's a, you know, it, it's the right thing to do. People, you know, were not happy when I was sending them those letters when they were complaining about Richmond, but now every month or two I'll get one saying, I'm sitting in traffic and, you know, I'm sorry, you know, I'm sorry I got mad at you. So I do think that it's, that is, it's one of our big things. We, we, I don't think we're gonna, I think the little things we're doing, the turning ra- rate, make it easy to turn and those things are gonna help. But the big picture, we need to think, in my own opinion, we need to be thinking about it a lot differently. We need to have twenty-five, thirty mile an hour controlled, nice streets. You know, rugged roads should connect all the way through and, you know, all that stuff should be connected in grid pattern. And I know that that's not popular because people don't want, you know, traffic through their neighborhood, but the other option is worse. And so I think, yeah, we'll, we'll see, we will see what happens, what comes out of the master plan this time and, you know, how we, how we proceed. But I, I, I just, it was interesting because Matt Peel was like, well, I never thought of it that way before, you know, so I think that it's just interesting. So anyhow, I think Andrew Vorse was right and we need to do that. So, thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I, uh, on affordable housing trust, um, think it's a really good idea if we do a select board, planning board and AHT strategic planning meeting at some point. Anyway, just wanted to put that on the board's radar that, um, I think that's probably coming up after, sometime after town meeting or the fall, whenever we can get everyone's schedules together.
Yes, if we think getting a group of five together, getting a group of twenty-five together is, um, uh, another challenge altogether. So.
One other, yeah, one other comment is I had a hard time not speaking up to some of the people under public comment tonight. I, you know, and we're not gonna talk about, I'm not gonna do it now, but, you know, sort of one of the things was this, there, there were look, that, I think Campbell had some good suggestions that have been looked at. We don't, I'm not gonna go into details. But there were also, some of them are not our articles. And so say, you know, us explaining, you know, citizens' articles as, you know, I, I think, but I do think at some point we should have it on the agenda to be able to talk a little bit about it maybe. I, I, it's, it's difficult. So anyway. But I did wanna, I do, I did wanna respond to her and I did wanna defend Rocky, but, you know, we couldn't. So.
Okay. Um, anybody ready to go home?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thanks, everybody, for listening. Have a good night.